It's recording. And in this viewfinder, in the top right-hand corner, it will say R E C. And it's recording. Another thing up front here, there's a red light, and that means it's
Mr. Chairman, my name is Bill Balderson. I live at sixteen Martha's Court here in Missoula. And I am the chairman of the Missoula Baseball Advocates, which is the group that has been exploring and examining the possibility of bringing a... As I indicated, I'm the chairman of Missoula Baseball Advocates. Would like, this evening, to explain, if I can, very briefly, the timing of our proposal. I suspect that, to many people, we may appear to be Johnny come lately to participating in MRA projects. The baseball end of this project has been ongoing for almost a year, and it was always our intention to approach MRA for partial funding. The timing became more critical for us as things developed with the major leagues. We are now dealing with a relatively finite window of opportunity here that will close at some point and probably not reopen for the foreseeable future. Specifically, I'm referring to three things. One is the expansion of the National League. National League is expanding by two teams. The commissioner anticipates announcing sometime middle of June. There's a very likely to be a trickle-down effect as the farm system for those two teams are established. We would like to be in a position to take advantage of any fallout that we could there. Additionally, the existing Pioneer League has a sitting committee consisting of owners and general managers that is examining the possibility of expanding the Pioneer League itself from eight teams to ten. That has not been done in the immediate past, and how long it'll take for them to get around to doing it again in the future, I don't know. So, we would like to be positioned such that we can take advantage of that. And finally, with the new requirements that are imposed on the construction of minor league ballparks, all new minor league facilities must meet certain standards, and all existing minor league facilities must be brought up to those standards by nineteen ninety-four. There's a very real possibility that at least two of the existing facilities being played in the Pioneer League right now will not be brought up to speed. The communities in which they are located will not spend the money. That'll mean that at least two of those teams will either lose their right to play in the minor leagues, or they will have to move their franchises. We would like, again, to be in a position to take advantage of that, should it happen. Unfortunately, there are three other cities that are actively in the hunt. Casper and Laramie, Wyoming, and Lethbridge, Alberta are actively seeking expansion franchises. Fortunately for us, we have two advantages that are over and above the advantages that we just naturally enjoy here in Missoula. The first is Ralph Nellis. Ralph Nellis is a very dear friend of Bunce Watkins, who has been very instrumental in this project, and Mr. Nellis has indicated repeatedly that he would prefer to see the next Pioneer League franchise come to Missoula. And additionally, we're centrally located in relation to the other teams, so that we can benefit the league in terms of scheduling and travel. So, we do have some advantages, but that's basically why we presented our proposal, as and when we did it, because as far as baseball goes, some things are going to be changing that are going to adversely impact us and our ability to get a team. I would like also to say that we really do not want to be seen as competing with any of the other projects that the agency presently has before it. I have some familiarity with, very tangential familiarity, with some of the other projects that the agency is addressing, and I think they're super. Specifically, MCT, I was on that board many, many years ago. I know some of the people that are still involved. They've done a heck of a job for their program and for Missoula. I do not want to be seen as being in competition with them. I think that what they're proposing and what some of the other proponents are proposing are very complementary to what we're proposing. I think we can complement one another and cooperate and not conflict. And that's benefited a little bit by the fact that we don't necessarily need all of our money immediately, assuming that this agency should agree to commit the money pending successful passage of the bond, assuming further a successful passage of the bond. We don't need that one million dollars on December one, for example. Basically, all we need is the ability to tie up the ground, either purchase it or secure it sufficiently so no one else can take it. And then, the next big input of money for our purposes won't be until spring of nineteen ninety-two, when we actually start construction. We were basically, there's going to be some costs involved in getting things ready to go, but we can't break ground until spring of nineteen ninety-two anyway. We're going to miss this construction season. One of the things that I think should be pointed out with regard to our particular proposal, the baseball end of this thing, is the economics of it. We have an advantage because we can rely on actual numbers from other Pioneer League franchises. They've been very, very willing to give us their numbers, income and expense. Additionally, we've conducted some surveys on our own. We conducted a telephone survey that indicated that sixty-five percent of the city and county residents that we contacted would attend Pioneer League ballgames if we had a club in Missoula. Of those people who said they would attend, the average number of games was nine point League-wide, for every thousand people in the county, twenty-one point oh seven of those people attend Pioneer League games. So, if you take roughly seventy-eight thousand people in Missoula County, divide that by a thousand, multiply it times twenty-one point oh seven, it comes to slightly over sixteen hundred per game, or slightly over fifty-seven thousand five hundred for a season. Our projections indicate the ball club breaks even at fifty-three thousand. We've also plugged in a five percent increase in attendance. The league has enjoyed a ten percent annual increase in attendance. We anticipate making money based upon the very conservative attendance figures and actual expense numbers throughout the league first year out. We anticipate spending thirty thousand dollars in lease fees to the city. When I say "we," whoever owns and operates the franchise, the numbers that we've plugged in include a thirty thousand dollar rental for the facility. The city would spend about fifteen thousand dollars in off-season maintenance. We're responsible for the maintenance during the season. The owner would be responsible for the maintenance after the season. That would leave a fifteen thousand dollar net profit for the city. What it would do with that money, I don't know. I don't know what it can do with the money. I don't know what it should do with the money, but it would be there anyway. Additionally, any proceeds that would be generated for off-season activities, concerts, rallies, leasing the facility for other purposes, would all be going to city coffers and not the ball clubs. Ray Klisch, who is the general manager of the Great Falls Dodgers, and has been for a number of years, has told me on a number of occasions that that organization brings one million dollars a year into the community. And one thing that I think is real important for us to remember, three million dollars for a baseball park is a lot of money, but that's a one-time expenditure. We pay that one time. We get the benefit, economic and intangible, year after year, season after season. If Ray Klisch's numbers are accurate, and he's got a lot of years of operating that ball club, we can expect a million dollars a year, plus all of the intangible benefits, for every year for as long as the facility exists. We would expect to pay a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars into the community as far as expenses. Every year, we can expect probably a minimum of seventy-five to seventy-eight thousand dollars of additional income for the salaries that are paid to the ballplayers, the coaches and the staff. The majority of these youngsters that would come in, come in as bonus babies. The draft is ongoing right now. They sign their contract. When they get to Missoula, their bonus check follows them, and they receive it here. These are young men who are going to take that money and spend it. I mean, they're going to be like sailors on leave. They're going to hit port, and they're going to spend that money, because they do it wherever they go. They buy cars, they buy stereos, they buy all of the things that nineteen, twenty, twenty-year-old young men buy, and that money's going to go right here into the community. We are consciously and intentionally seeking other uses for the ballpark, whether that be outdoor concerts, whether that be rented out for political rallies or other forms of rallies, whether that be using the parking lot for RV conventions, for arts and crafts fairs, swap meets, whatever. It doesn't make, it makes very little difference to us. The facility would probably also be amenable to putting youth activities, youth soccer, youth football, that type of thing, in the outfield, on the outfield grass during the off-season. There are a number of intangible benefits that we anticipate. I won't go down this laundry list that we prepared. A couple of things that I would mention, however, by putting the ballpark where we propose it, we're going to be making a substantial improvement to that particular site, which is right now vacant, a vacant log yard. We would also be, in all likelihood, expanding and enhancing the existing riverfront system to that extent. We would also anticipate getting Missoula's name out in at least seven other communities on almost a daily basis in the newspaper, on the radio and on television, and all of the satellite communities that view those broadcasts or see that. Missoula would be one of a very few cities in the nation that enjoys Major League Baseball. Additionally, and I think probably finally for my purposes, I've heard a lot of comment that we, that the money that we would propose to spend for the construction of a baseball park would be better spent addressing other community needs. And specifically, I've heard reference to the fact that we have a number of people in the community that are underfed or ill-fed, and the food bank is now undergoing a very substantial fundraising operation of its own. Again, I don't think we have to look at this as an either-or. I don't think that we have to look at, well, if this money goes here, it's not going to go there. Minor League Baseball, historically and nationally, becomes a very, very helpful and instrumental element in its own, in their communities. For example, there are any number of promotions that take place on an annual basis whereby admission to a ballgame is by donation of foodstuffs. You bring a can of this, or a box of that, or whatever, and then that food is then donated to someplace else, to the food bank or whatever. Those things happen all the time, and there's no reason to expect that a well-run operation with a general manager in Missoula that has a social conscience couldn't be done the same way. Additionally, these kids come into Missoula, they're typically the, most of them have not been away from home very often. They move in with families, they develop relationships with people in the community, and they become very socially conscious themselves. They take advantage of the opportunity to be role models to the kids. They speak very, very freely in, at alcohol and drug awareness programs, and they can provide and do provide a very worthwhile and healthful role models for the children in this community. Basically, what I think we should focus on is the fact that really, the only limits that are imposed upon the contribution of a Pioneer League ball club to Missoula are those limits that we set by our own lack of imagination and lack of effort. Looking at the other clubs that exist in other cities in the league, they make a very substantial and long-lasting and positive impact on the communities that house them. I would very, very strongly urge the MRA to give favorable consideration to our proposal.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. My name is Dick Goldsmith, and I'm here to talk about the ice skating rink portion of what we call the Missoula Sports Park. I got involved in this whole procedure last August after I was asked by the mayor to be on what's called the Missoula Winter Sports Council. The mayor convened a group of about eight people to find out what was going on in Missoula in the wintertime as far as recreation, what we could do to make Missoula a more attractive place for people to be in the wintertime. And we worked very hard on these issues, and he brought together a broad cross-section of the community. There was people from the university community, like Keith Glaze and Gordon Opel, people from city government, Amy Eaton and Dave Blair, who's with Pat Williams's office, Jerry Cavalt with the Lowell Forest, and Sue Monk. We all got together on a monthly basis to talk about what we could do to improve recreation in Missoula in the wintertime. And what came about from all those meetings was that we determined that Missoula was long overdue for an ice skating facility. The details of our ice rink proposal, we have formulated and distributed to all of you, and I don't really want to get into too many of the nuts and bolts of the proposal itself. I just want to let you know that this group of people that I've worked with has been a very dedicated, hard-working group of people. We're doing all of this on our own time because we think it's a good idea for our community. We have, the ice skating subcommittee now has been meeting on an almost weekly basis for the last four months to formulate all of our information, and there's just incredible enthusiasm and support for this project. And like I said, we're doing this for the community. We feel that this is a major benefit to the youth of our community and to the families of our community. It also has benefits for the business community and to make Missoula a much more attractive place to live in. I don't want to dwell on all the benefits. As a member of the business community, I think I want to limit my presentation to mostly what I see as the benefits to the downtown and to the business climate of Missoula by building this Missoula Sports Park on the Champion Site. I feel that the Missoula business community likes this idea. From the people I've talked to, and I know there's some other people from the Downtown Association and other business owners here tonight, that I hope will talk in favor of this, and I've gotten a lot of support for this idea. I can see several major benefits to having a Missoula Sports Park at the Champion Site. This will be a community facility. This will be something for everybody to go to. If you wanted to take your kids ice skating, you can drop them off, you can go downtown and shop. This also affects visitors that come to Missoula. It's one more reason to come to the city of Missoula to do business or to trade, or you can do recreation, do business, and enjoy everything Missoula has to offer. This is going to make Missoula a more varied and extremely exciting place to come to. I don't look at this project as competing with the other downtown projects that the Missoula Redevelopment Agency has undertaken or is contemplating undertaking. We need a variety of things downtown, including the Missoula Children's Theater Project. We can only make this project happen if the people of Missoula want it, and if we can get the vote out at the election in favor of this project. And as Bill says, we are ready for a door-to-door campaign. The people I've worked with on this project are incredibly dedicated and devoted, and I believe that we will give it a really good push in November to get the vote out and to get a positive response on this. I see a lot of economic benefits to downtown Missoula. There are going to be several jobs created within the facilities, both the ballpark and the ice rink, but then there's an awful lot of auxiliary jobs that are very hard to quantify and hard to put a label on exactly why these jobs are created. I have a letter here I'd like to read to you. I know you can't see it from there, but this is written on, letterhead from Patagonia Company, and it says, "Dear sirs, as a future resident of Missoula, I would very much like to be added to your mailing list and kept informed of developments towards building an indoor skating rink. Thank you, David Abalo, Ventura, California." This is an example of why people want to do business in Missoula, why a company like Patagonia is looking to locate here, as for the quality of life we can offer for their employees, and it's a major benefit to doing business when you can get off your job and have something else to do, like go skating or go watch a ballgame. The Washington Grizzly Stadium, which was built amid controversy similar to what I feel is going to happen on these proposals, has turned out to be a tremendous asset to our community. Every weekend that there's a Grizzly football game in town, there's thousands and thousands of people that come to town, a lot more than ever came to Doran Blazer Field to watch a game, and the impact to the Missoula business community is significant. I also feel that there's a matter of timing involved in getting this project done. The Champion Log Yard Site will not stay there indefinitely as an abandoned log yard. Something will happen on that site, either a park complex like we're talking about, or a higher-density type of use, or industrial use, or something else. But eventually, something will happen there, and I feel that a sports park with river walkways, open space, is an excellent, excellent use for the site. One quote that I've heard recently, and I don't know where it comes from, is that Montana's greatest export currently is its educated youth, and I hate to see that happen. If you saw the census statistics in today's paper, we have less than eight hundred thousand people in this state, and it doesn't seem to be getting much better with facilities like this in our town. I feel that our youth might have one more reason to stay, and more companies might decide to move here and create a better economic climate for all of us. Thank you.
I'm Greg Rutherford. I'm involved, volunteer-involved with the Winter Sports Council on ice skating, and also have been involved with the natural ice that we've tried to maintain at Playfair Park, rather sporadically successful for five years. And we're interested in getting more consistent ice in Missoula, and the best way we came up with was an indoor ice facility. There are other options that work up to that, such as outdoor, artificial ice and so forth, but with our winter air situation in Missoula and so forth, we felt that enclosed facility, even though more expensive, would be greater benefit to the community. Furthermore, we felt that the downtown site would be ideal for the entire community, and that's why we got on board with the sports park theme and the Champion Site. When we did that, the unknowns that were projected earlier, you know, we're relying somewhat on MRA to help us out in that area, and we haven't studied them exactly, but we've been given some figures that indicate that there's going to be some expenses involved on building on that site that perhaps we wouldn't have had if we'd have done it on Playfair Site, which is already, has an ice skating rink there, and most of the facilities are ready to go. We could put up a building and a rink there. So, that's how the million-dollar figure comes up, which is in that proposal, and we feel the ice skating rink can support operating costs plus approximately a million dollars in a revenue bond that could support itself if it were a tax-exempt issue and a low, you know, tax-exempt interest rate. But the government itself wouldn't have to do anything but give it the tax-exempt status. That's what we meant by no government subsidy. Also, the other level of no government subsidy is that we are very confident that the operating costs can be covered by the facility. We're to go under a general obligation bond, and if it were structured such that the fees of the rink and so forth were geared towards maximizing revenues rather than subsidizing the revenues for the users of the community, that there could be surplus funds going back into the general fund if we didn't have to do debt service. But the key to that is, if you're going to allow the rink to maximize revenues. For example, public skating is the best use of the facility in terms of generating revenue. However, a lot of public rinks that I've talked to, due to the interest of involving the community, once it's in a community-type of environment, want to have their youth programs on Friday and Saturday night and all the best ice hours in lieu of doing public skating. And when that happens, the revenues of the rink drop. So, there's a component of community interest involved here, especially if it gets into public-sector general obligation bond. It wouldn't be there if we had to support the facility solely on its own and were allowed to operate with the idea that we're going to maximize revenues. So, does that give you an idea of what we're talking about?
What's your present plan? Do you intend to do a general obligation bond, or do you intend to do a...
We intend to do a general obligation bond, because we feel that's the best way to get the maximum benefit to the community. In other words, getting it on the Champion Site, getting involved with the sports park theme in a downtown location, there isn't any other place you can do a rink downtown that I'm aware of, and it's somewhat more expensive and so on. So, you know, that's why we went this way. Is that what you're asking? We're interested in being downtown. We think that's a good place to be for both the community and for the rink itself. You know, and on the other hand, we can locate it somewhere else for perhaps less cost and try to do it on a standalone basis. The other option we would have is there's enough support, we feel, around there to get a certain level of grants from private businesses into the rink and using that as a kind of free money or equity that can reduce the debt service, and maybe even spend a little bit extra to enhance the facility, make a bigger building and so forth, and get up to the million and a half dollar, but only have a million dollars in debt, say, if there's more money coming from private sources, which we don't know what that kind of support is going to get yet, but we are interested in pursuing that kind of support very vigorously if we can give them a specific plan that we're going after, and that's what we're trying to accomplish here tonight. And we felt that the MRA was... And we felt that the MRA was, would be an excellent catalyst to get this thing moving if it was going to benefit the downtown, which I think, uh, you know, there's a lot of benefits for the downtown we're trying to point out tonight.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, my name's Jim Fleishman. I live at eleven thirty-seven Sherwood. Uh, and I coached the youth hockey program this summer at Playfair Park. Um, and I realize that the, uh, a pretty glowing case has been made for baseball and, um, as a, uh, it's the great American pastime, and they don't make movies like The Natural about hockey, or there's no hockey equivalent of Casey at the Bat. But, uh, we had a lot of, uh, youths, both boys and girls, interested in, in the hockey program this winter and maintained, even with the erratic ice that, uh, not due at all to the, the strong effort that's put in by the Missoula Ice Recreation Association, just sort of the weather doesn't cooperate with us here. Uh, even with the erratic ice schedule that we experienced, we averaged twenty-five or thirty kids a night, three nights a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And, uh, without competition from wrestling and other programs on Wednesday night because some of the kids were already involved in, in programs, uh, I think that our capacity to have a program, uh, with a far greater participation was, was unlimited. Um, and there was just tremendous interest on the part of the kids. Quite a few of them are here tonight. Several of them had planned to speak until they saw the size of the crowd. Now they're all kind of laying low. But, uh, I think a, the case, the economic case for both the, uh, it's possible for people to overstate the economic case for a ballpark and/or a hockey rink. Um, and having said that, I may, I think I'm going to overstate it. Um, uh, I grew up in northern New England, um, where, in a similar type of climate and environment to what we have here in Missoula, a lot of dark, overcast winter, winter nights. And part of the reason I was interested in getting the hockey program started was because when I was seven or eight years old, uh, which is how old my son is right now, I was very interested with, uh, my friends in having a hockey program in the town where I lived, and there was no ice rink. And so my father thought that kids should be able to play ice hockey, and he put together a youth hockey program. And in the first year, we maybe had thirty or forty kids. We skated a couple times a week. In the second year, we had a hundred, a hundred and fifty kids, and we skated, you know, four or five times a week. And by the time I was in high school, the community had built two side-by-side indoor ice rinks, which were, uh, ran twelve months a year, uh, made money for the community. They were running summer and winter hockey camps. Teams from, and, and, and whole communities would be showing up from other parts of northern New England, Canada, et cetera, to play in hockey tournaments. Um, the other thing was that the, the rink was also very much a center of, of, uh, youth activity. Uh, there wasn't a lot to do in the evening if you were, uh, old enough to get out or, or a young teen. Uh, and it became the focus for, uh, the social activity of, of young people in the community in a constructive kind of way. Um, you know, when you go down Higgins on Saturday night, it's sort of, you know, the, I think it might be worth building a rink if all that it did was to diminish the traffic on Higgins Avenue on Saturday night. Um, but, uh, so there was a tremendous, uh, um, amount of community activity that centered around the rink. The, uh, figure skating programs evolved in which a lot of the young women participated. Public skating was an opportunity for young people of opposite sexes who really didn't have sort of dating opportunities or social opportunities to, to meet and do things, and it, it was a, a, it was a good environment for, for young people to come. The hockey program grew, uh, in leaps and bounds, and there wasn't any hockey in the community when I was, uh, age eight. And by the time I was in high school, the community had a championship high school team and, and was drawing a lot of business around the rink. So, uh, I'm here as an advocate for, for an ice skating rink. And, um, you know, I'm sure there are people who think that, uh, it's ironic really because a lot of times in, in my professional capacity, I'm always sort of keeping an eye on government and government spending and whether or not it's worthwhile and really going to benefit the community, but, um, so I sort of feel like I'm wearing a different hat. But I, I really do believe that this is a, a worthwhile endeavor. Um, I think that, uh, the benefits to the community will be, would be substantial. I think that the rink could support itself, and, uh, I think it adds a whole nother component to sort of what's available for both, uh, recreation and, and social interaction in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Ross, three hundred room rock. Well, I think, um, we just keep the kids out of the malls and... A lot of the kids don't even know about the rink down at Playfair. They would know a lot more about this rink because it's more downtown. They'll add another program too, because we have many programs, a soccer one, baseball. They'll just add another one. And like you said, they will keep the traffic down, you know. Yep. Will help a lot for our community, I think. That's about all.
I'm an orthopedic surgeon and a native of, uh, Missoula now for ten years and, uh, formerly a native of Canada. And, uh, prior to the study of medicine, I took up the study of hockey and, uh, I'd like to share with you some of my experiences about the feeling of, of what a hockey rink did for keeping me out of trouble. Uh, it's a sort of, uh, of community effort that I really believe has to come from the community. In other words, talking about the financial aspects of it, there is no way that I think that we can look at this as a, uh, uh, black bottom line thing that is going to make money for us, because certainly my experience in Canada, where I took a year off school to coach hockey, worked as the assistant rink manager, and then when we expanded the arena, worked as the construction supervisor for the, uh, general contractor, uh, you can't do it on a for-profit basis. If you do it for a for-profit basis, there you'll see kids here tonight who won't be able to afford to either skate as regularly as they want, take figure skating lessons, play hockey, broom ball, uh, ringette, whatever the facility is putting on at that time. If we make it for profit, then it turns out that, uh, uh, the old folks here who've got deep pockets can afford to buy up the prime time and, uh, use it for whenever we want to use it and the youth of the community who really should have the opportunity to use it, uh, see that opportunity evaporate before their very eyes. And the for-profit rinks in Canada that have been set up have largely been bought out by the communities because of that, or else because if the community did have good rink facilities, they could underbid the, uh, for-profit facilities, and as a result, uh, they ended up being adult-only clubs. So I think from the hockey rink standpoint, I, the only way to do it is to have the community to get behind it, or else ask some service club be prepared to donate all the labor every day. And to Greg, my hat's off. Uh, uh, I've supported him some financially, but not as much, and, uh, for him to keep flooding his lawn when I can hardly flood my lawn every year, uh, I think deserves a great deal of credit for him to persevere, to make, make ice here when, uh, it's a lot easier to do it in your fridge. The, um, idea of putting it in with a baseball stadium, I think, is fine, uh, because we're going to save a lot. You can, uh, Ottawa's got an excellent facility where you save the infrastructure. You can tuck it in underneath a wing of a baseball stadium, save on half your roof costs, your parking lots, your dressing rooms, uh, washrooms and all that cuts down the costs significantly. But once again, if, if, uh, we're going to try and figure out whether we need twenty-five hundred fans a night or fifteen hundred fans a night, that's something that's going to have to take care of itself, and it'll depend on the people who get the, uh, baseball organization going and how well the community will stand behind it. I don't think you can get people to predict that they're going to do well until they actually see it. And I'm impressed by the number of people that are here tonight. The, uh, uh, idea that, that, uh, it will go throughout the year has been my experience as well in Missoula. If indeed we want development, I don't know whether we really do, because I'm surprised we haven't heard some opponents tonight to this idea, because, uh, every time you think of something, uh, it's going to destroy something that you and I love about our community if we indeed do become discovered and development comes. Uh, this may be one of the reasons. Uh, kids would, where I grew up, would love to come to Missoula for three weeks to have a summer camp and play hockey, get baseball taught to them by, uh, amateur professional baseball players, uh, take a horseback riding experience in the mountains, uh, a canoe experience on the lakes. Uh, I've talked to Pat Dodson at the Y. I'm a board member, and we've talked about this for years, but the things that have held us back from ever getting this going, uh, is the fact that we don't have a rink. And, uh, the people that are going to come to this camp obviously are going to be high-end users, but those are the people that are going to come to Missoula and find out that it's discovered. And for those of you who travel around the, the country, we're still undiscovered, fortunately, I guess, or unfortunately, if you're trying to develop it. And I think that's all it comes down to, is the bottom line is, do, do we want to see Missoula develop? If we do, I think it's going to be a tremendous asset. If we don't want to see Missoula develop, then I don't think we should be bothered meeting about this.
Mr. Woolley, I have a question. Uh, you worked at a rink in Canada.
That's correct.
Uh, tell me about, uh, rinks in a moderate-sized town, a town the size of Missoula. What would one of those rinks look like in Canada?
Uh, rink in a town the size, sixty thousand in Canada, first of all, any town the size of, uh, Derby would have a rink in Canada, and it would likely also have a curling rink. So in Missoula, you're going to have at least one rink of seating capacity on a hockey or ice sheet of anywhere between five and ten thousand seats, and it just depends on how active the community is. And you're going to have satellite rinks all around the community. In other words, people from Butte, evidently years ago, uh, outdoor rinks were extremely common in Butte all around the community, and they could be any size. But by and large in Canada, they're all regulation-sized sheets now, two hundred, uh, by eighty-five, and, uh, the seating capacity can be nil. In other words, you just have enough room to stand around it, and it's a sheet metal frame, and that can be well-built under a million dollars versus how much seating capacity and how much multi-facility use we want to have, uh, you know? And, and a thousand seats is not going to be enough, but you have to start somewhere. You know, I guess my feeling is, is Champion Log Yard's a great spot, but I'd love to see, uh, where I grew up, most of the, uh, ice rinks were on the fairground sites, because the fairground sites tended to be central downtown sites, and you used it as an exhibition hall, and it was a meeting hall, and, uh, you know, it had a lot of other uses throughout the year. Uh, if we get the voluntary support, in other words, that's what makes it go in Canada. The Lions Club, the Kinsman Club, the Kiwanis Club give up all their, for their volunteer labor. They take the tickets, they clean the stands, they sell the hot dogs, everything. And, uh, that's what really makes the arena go because of, of volunteer help. And, um, it saddens me a little bit to see our amateur coaches being paid, but if that's what it takes to get an amateur coach in this day and age, then I guess it's money well spent. Uh, but nonetheless, that's, that's how it works, and the subsidy from the government usually occurs at the times of improvements. If it got a capital investment, you need a new Zamboni. Uh, the rink can't come up with, well, they used to, they used to be all kinds of pirate machines, but I would take a guess a new Zamboni is a hundred and twenty thousand?
Forty-five thousand.
The, the deluxe variety?
Four thousand five hundred.
But, you know, that, you, you don't, you don't have forty-five thousand left over at the end of the year because you're constantly making improvements in one way or another. You're cutting the ice rates as low as you possibly can so you get maximal use. And, uh, a rink here, if it's done well, I can't see that in two years, there wouldn't be enough demand that you'd start planning for your next rink somewhere else in the city and it'd become part of the parks and recreation.
My name's Darryl Kraft, five hundred Ben Hogan Drive. I'm, I'm Kraft. I'm here as an opponent, not necessarily for the projects, but for the one million-dollar of funding for the projects. I thought I'd hear a little bit more, some sounder arguments and better facts for people walking up to request a million dollars. Um, there is, they're talking about economic, the great economic, um, benefits we'll have, and yet, um, the chamber won't come out, which is the business leadership in this community and support these projects. So there must be something behind that. I don't know, you have to go talk to them, but if they're, if this is such great economic benefits, they should be leading the way. Where it's located downtown, that the parents are going to bring the kids downtown to skate and then, um, then go shopping, if I was locating something like that as a businessman, I would take it to where the people are, where the residents are. Now Playfair seemed like a good idea. There's a lot of, uh, housing density down there that I would, you know, locate it to where the kids can get to it. Um, downtown from, well, let's, let's just go with the South Hills area in South Missoula just is a long bike ride for any kid. They aren't going to be coming here by themselves at night to go, um, skating. Um, I wish, I like, and I just wanted to make my, one more point, is that they were coming here to ask for money. Um, this community has developed many things. Um, the music shelled at the park, the all-kids children's park, and, um, the YMCA. They went out, and I, I don't know the exact figures, but it was a lot of money, and they raised it, and it's a great community thing. And I think this pro, this skating rink is a good, good project, but not to commit a million dollars with the, um, looks like not solid planning and really knowing what is going to be going on at this point.
Mr. Kraft, would you, uh, would you support it, would the chamber support it?
I, I would tend to go more that way, yes.
Brian DeSalvatore, D.I., capital S.A.L., V.A.T.O.R.E., three fourteen Evans. Uh, I have been a member, uh, of the Missoula Baseball Advocates. I am a longtime baseball fan. If I had an arm, speed, could hit the curve, and a good glove, I would be playing in the major leagues right now. Uh, I have been involved in Missoula softball for over a decade as a player, manager, sponsor, briefly co-commissioner, and currently as an officer of the Missoula Softball Association. The only ice that I like is surrounded by vodka and tonic on a summer evening. I would love to spend an evening with my little nephew watching the game. I like baseball. It's a grand vision. All I'm asking you is to look at the reality, answer these questions, and realize it is a cold-hearted business decision and one that will be staring you in the face for the next thirty years as far as, uh, bonds and a stadium that may or may not be used all those years, because owners come and owners go. And that's why I'm saying, what sort of owner? You have to put many conditions on this money. Thank you.
My name is Will Snodgrass, P.O. Box twenty-eight eighty-five, and I am the spokesperson for Missoulians for Clean Environment. I note that there has been one recurrent theme which runs through the MRA transactions, and that can be described by the words, "the downtown business," which boils down, of course, to money. I don't think we can kid ourselves here. I think the bottom line here is in fact money. I think the bottom line here is in fact money. I recall going to a MRA meeting a season or so ago, and a gentleman asked, can't we spend this money on something a bit more wisely? I believe he mentioned public health. The respondent to the question said, you know how this works, you're in real estate. I was amazed. It is a matter of public record, it's taped. Both of those gentlemen may be in the room this evening. Regarding the impact upon this community of this $3 to $5 to $6 million proposal, I submit wholeheartedly that it might be better to trade in the $3 million parking lot and use the money which we're proposing to spend here this evening to finance some other projects. Our air quality here, as any pulmonary specialist will tell you, is very poor. The people that did the studies with respect to our aquifer will tell you that it is in the top 5% of endangered aquifers, yet this city does not have an environmental enforcement officer, and we're told it cannot afford one. I was born in Minneapolis, I grew up around the Minneapolis Twins, I worked at the stadium, I played hockey, I'm a North Star fan, and I like kids. They're in my front yard all the time knocking on my door, they want to be pushed on the swing. I'd be the last person to take any fun out of their lives, but air is business. I think we better be looking at that first of all. I find this entire proposal to be an unbelievable proposal, given the facts that we are all now well-aware of. This is not 1947, nor is it 1955 or 1965. It is 1991. There are some rather pressing issues with which we are faced, all of us, and they cost money to solve them. One of which would be the French drains, which we all seem to be able to ignore here with oil running in them by the gallon every day into our drinking water. That's how I feel about it. I think we know what the bottom line is here. I think it has to do with money that goes into certain pockets. I see that there are baseball fields in the area of the proposed stadium, which are peopled by softball players who are out there with their families. I think that we don't need to put down any more asphalt in this city to make more parking lots, to draw more traffic into this air shed. I don't think we need to sell any more Budweiser at baseball games because, of course, that's a part of doing business at baseball stadiums. I would urge you all to put the money to better use. Thank you.
My name is McRobert Meek. I'm a student at the university. I'm very much in favor of both the baseball field and the hockey rink. I'm from Billings and the Pioneer League team there, I was a bat boy for two years, and it's just extremely positive, has an extremely positive effect on the whole community. I mean, you know, most, most people like baseball and enjoy, you know, going out to the baseball park on a nice summer evening. There was, there were a lot of players that played on that farm team and a lot of the other teams in the Pioneer League that are now in the professionals, and it's, you know, it's nice for Montana to be able to say that they watched them play and that, you know, that was a part of their life. The, I played junior hockey up until high school, and we played a lot of tournaments, in a lot of tournaments with teams from Canada, Lethbridge, all over Alberta and Saskatchewan. And it was tough going, you know, clear up there to play a tournament, you know, and it was tough for them to come clear out here. The closest meeting place was usually Butte, and Missoula would be the perfect hub. Teams all over Washington play, and there's always going to be, well, I played in a lot of camps in the summer in the Metro. We used to have a team in the Western Hockey League in Billings called the Big Horns. There's players from that team that are now in the National Hockey League. They come back and do camps in the summer. I'm sure that they'd be interested in helping out, you know, up here just because Missoula, I mean, it's, it's one of the neater cities in Montana. I mean, I've never really been up here, I've always lived in Billings, and until I became a student, I'd never come up here, but I like it a lot up here, and I know that a lot of the other students around campus, a lot of them from Canada, a lot of them from the Northwest, would be interested in all this. They would help out, and I know a lot of them that would help coaching. I know a lot of soccer players that, as a matter of fact, I'm missing a game right now to speak, that would be interested in, I mean, there's no really facility in the Northwest except for Spokane to have indoor tournaments. And with the hockey rink, there'd be a facility, and there's all kinds of teams from Western Washington and Eastern Washington and Idaho that I know would be interested. It's, Missoula's a perfect location, and it may look as though the economic benefit isn't as great as, as a lot of people would like it to be, but it just seems to me there's something about just having those resources available for our youth that you just can't, you can't put a price tag on. That's about it. Thanks.
Chairman Stalcup, members of the MRA. My name's Ken Stoltz, and I live at 1605 Sunflower. And if I might, I think there's a couple young people who might be willing to talk if I backed up and said, why don't you come up here and talk?
My name is Bodie Murphy. My name is Bodie Murphy, and I, I think the, I think the Playfair Park was a great idea, but we only get about six weeks of good ice, and in those six weeks sometimes it rains and the ice really gets bad, so we can't play. And I think that if we had an indoor rink, it would encourage people to stop, like, watching TV all the time and just going to malls and stuff. And we already have baseball fields, and I like baseball too, but we don't have an indoor rink, so I would want the indoor rink more. That's all.
I'm here speaking at the request of President George Dennison of the University of Montana, and perhaps he asked me to be here because of two things. One, he probably noticed the scar in the middle of my forehead before hockey players were required to wear helmets, and perhaps it was also because I told him when I selected my college, I wasn't going to go to a college that didn't have an ice rink. We speak in support of both proposals, and we really feel and encourage public investment in the infrastructure and including some modest risk-taking. The same kind of risk-taking that the university took in building its performing arts building, in building the Washington Grizzly Stadium, in upgrading the track facilities at Dornblazer Field, and we will again undertake in the construction of a business school building on campus. These are important public infrastructure investments, and we support this one. In particular, we feel the riverfront location is ideal. One, there's a lot of investment that's going on, and I appreciate the work of the MRA in that regard, and feel this would complement that. One thing that I think I would agree with Will on is we do have a good bus system in Missoula. Speaking from my parking responsibilities at the university, I would dearly love to have that bus system run in the evening, and the more business we have in a riverfront location, the more opportunity I think we will have to support a viable bus program in the evening, and that would be of great benefit to the university's students as well. I think I'll end my comments there, but just on behalf of the president and the university, we do support this proposal and your investment in this regard. Thank you.
Is there someone here that represents the Downtown Association?
My name is Dan Cedarburg, and I am here on behalf of the Downtown Association tonight. The Downtown Association supports the, both proposals at the location that is proposed. We have discussed many of the issues that are on the agenda for the MRA, and we think there are a lot of very good projects that are going to be discussed, and we're hopeful that they can all, we have supported most of them. We're hopeful that the agency can continue its good work and do those. But tonight, I want to specifically talk about why we would support the baseball and the hockey rink. We look at what is working for us downtown, and I think we really have to remember that this agency is charged with this core area. The tax dollars do come out of this core area, and your mission is to do things that will help encourage development and growth in that area. And when, we've been looking at our retail promotions over the last six months and really at what's going on, and things that we're finding that may be contrary to what was going on five or 10 years ago. What we're seeing really benefits the downtown retailers is events. We just went through a series of a couple of meetings where we got 60 or 70 people in attendance, and we talked about what would work for the building the downtown. And the retailers are saying, as opposed to maybe 10 years ago when we'd have a sale and draw a lot of people down here, what really works for us is if we have an event that generates people, that gets traffic into the downtown area. Classic examples are the out-to-lunch program that we're sponsoring in Caris Park on Wednesdays in the summer, the facility that was developed with MRA funds and now is being used with the private sector Downtown Association sponsorship and the radio stations that sponsor that. That kind of thing really brings people into the downtown, is really helpful to the businesses downtown. The Coral Festival last year was another classic example. The tournaments that come to town and bring people into town, the things that the university sponsors, the concerts and things that bring people into town. Those are the kinds of things that our existing businesses would like to see us do to allow them to continue to grow and to prosper. We think that the ice rink and the baseball stadium would generate the kind of events that bring people into the downtown area, that have the spin-off effect of the shopping, of getting acquainted with downtown, seeing what we've really done over the last 10 years, and that's a very, very positive thing. The other thing that we're seeing is, as opposed to people who come, who are already here and helping them, we're seeing in recruiting, and when we talk to people that are moving into the area, and we're talking about why they're moving into the area, they're not moving in because there are great jobs here already, and they're not moving in for some of the other reasons that they may move to, say, Seattle for. They're moving here because of the quality of life and because of the vitality of the community. And sponsoring things like a hockey rink that will allow for development of a youth hockey program that's been talked about is just another example of the kind of thing that will attract people from outside into this community. So we think both from the perspective of helping the businesses that are already here and bringing in business, that these projects are very, very worthwhile, and we would support them. And I guess to address one other point that's been circulating about the expenditure of a large amount of money on a project like this, I would, I would think back to something that Joan Johnkle said at a meeting that I was at a year or so ago about what the MRA is all about. She made the analogy that this was like the savings account that we have, that this was the fund that has been created that allows us to go out and not build a jail, which is something that we need to have and probably are going to be required by law to do. It's not the kind of thing that allows us to go out and hire another, another person as a firefighter, but it's the kind of agency that allows us to go out and take our savings and invest it on something that's going to be a return for us. So we can go out and, and maybe we don't have the exact numbers right now on what it's going to cost us or how much the maintenance budget is going to be on the ice rink, or whether or not the baseball park is going to break even the first year. But this is the kind of money where we can go out and invest and allow these people who are very excited about this and who will put their time and effort into it to make sure that over the long haul, the hockey rink will work, the baseball park will work. We spend our money, we invest it, and we get our return. And so, you know, with all those factors, we would strongly support the baseball and the hockey.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Unfair one.
Yeah.
If the Downtown Association had a choice between spending their money on this or developing a walkway from the footbridge on the north side of the river all the way around the Edgewater, all the way to Orange Street, can you tell us what its preference would be?
We have not made that decision yet. I think we're at the same point you are in making those decisions, and my hedge answer would be, I know there's a committee studying expansion of the MRA district and creating a new district or however that works out. I think what we're going to support is creating a new district so we have money to do all these things because they're all good projects. We have not, to directly answer the question, prioritized. If we have to choose between the Wilma, which we've supported, and the children's theater, and baseball, and hockey, and the trails, the pathways which we've supported, and we know that if you add up all those dollars and you add up what you have in the bank and can reasonably expect over the next year, we're at or exceeding your resources. We haven't done that yet, Ron.
Would you do that?
You know what, you know what, when we talked about it, what we said was, well, we've always trusted the MRA's judgment in the past, and we'll just wait and see. That's true. That's, you know, that was the response that came out. We, we'll be more than happy to participate, but we have not made the decision.
I just have one other question. I know you don't speak for the chamber. Has the chamber said, no, we don't support this, if you know? Is it just acquiescing to what we do, or is it in support of it, if you know?
I don't know.
My name is Jay Rutherford, and I live at 5428 Prospect Drive up in Grand Creek. I'm going to talk tonight on behalf of the youth of this community. Ice hockey is a great sport. It's a great game to play, it's a great game to watch. Some of you may not believe that because you see a National Hockey League game and you see lots of fights, lots of high-sticking and so forth. But growing up as a child, as a youth, you need something to play that you don't have to be big to be good. And ice hockey is the kind of game that you can play and not be good, or not be big in order to be good. All right? Let me repeat that. Ice hockey, ice hockey is a great game to play where you don't have to be big to be good. Here in Missoula, a young person, a young athlete who aspires to go to college and he'd like to earn a scholarship, what does he have to do? Well, basketball and football. Now, they're two great sports. But what do you have to be in basketball to be good? You have to be tall, don't you? If you're five foot eight, or five foot nine, or five foot 10, and you aspire to be a basketball player, your future is not going to be too promising. If you want to be a football player and you don't weigh 190 pounds, 100, 200 pounds, and have big shoulders, you're not going to go too far in football. But in ice hockey, you've got a great opportunity. So there's a, that's what I'm saying here, is that ice hockey has a lot of skills that combine the skills of basketball, football, and baseball. So I think to provide that opportunity for a youth to go on for a scholarship where you don't have to be big to be good, ice hockey would suit a fine avenue. you don't have to be big to be good, ice hockey would suit a fine avenue for our young people. Thank you.
My name is Charles Jontle. I live at 830 Evans and I'm here neither as an opponent or a proponent. What I wanted to do is remind both the MRA and the city that there is an existing facility right in the heart of Missoula worth 5, 10, 15, 20 million dollars. That's dreadfully neglected by the city and I think to a degree by MRA, by the county, and by a lot of the businesses. And that thing is called the Clark's Fork River. This is incredibly valuable thing that gets elbowed around and I would caution you that whatever you decide to do, to please take care of the river. That includes the banks. A river is not complete without its banks. If I, if I had to vote on this, I'd probably vote against it because I've been elbowed out of a lot of things, a lot of sensitive value in my life by sports enthusiasts who don't look, I think, to the natural things that we have at our fingertips as often as they could. And I think Missoula would be very, very wise to put a lot more money and a lot more attention on the river. It's been abused terribly. The very site you're talking about is where an individual made millions of dollars dumping hundreds of tons of sawdust into the river year after year after year through loopholes in the law. And a lot of people who live along the banks and have businesses along the Banks River have long histories in the past of dumping stuff in the river. There's tons and tons of garbage in the river that nobody's bothering to take out. There's tons of it in the riverbanks that nobody's bothering to take out. There's no money that seems available to help reconstruct the banks, to keep the banks with their integrity. Also, the river, I think, is a very alien place to people. It's a wonderful sports facility itself, but also it's got incredible life in it that I think many people would be astounded. You know more about the moon in general, I think, than you do about the Clark's Fork River in terms of the diversity of life and amazing things that are in the river. And that's threatened in Missoula. It's threatened primarily in the bank area. And I hope whatever the corridor may be, if you do have that sports complex there, that it be adequate and that there be funds available to help keep it a natural habitat along the river. You don't have the river if you pave it right down to the riverbank and if you abuse the bank. The river has to have that too. Thank you.
I'm Pat Robbins, 4155 Fox Farm Road. I just come here tonight just representing myself, but also a number of people over the last several weeks who I've talked to and I would like to just go on the record as favoring both the ice hockey rink and the proposed baseball stadium down at the Champion Land. I think that having grown up in the city where baseball was played on a semi-professional basis during the summer, it gave a very special air and flavor to the whole community, being able to turn out and have the atmosphere of baseball available. And also, the ice hockey and not only the ice hockey, but I think just the recreational open skating for the citizens of Missoula is something that would be very much appreciated by the entire city. And I think that with what the MRA has already done for the downtown area, it's really been tremendous. And the flavor of the downtown area is significantly improved and changing and is becoming such a vital area of our community that I would hope that you would see fit to go to bat, so to speak, and support these projects. Thank you.
My name is Christina Wissner, 126 McLeod Avenue, and I'm here speaking in favor of the ice skating rink and the baseball park because I really enjoy watching baseball and I think that many people in Missoula would be willing to go to a baseball game just for fun and to, it's something to do on a summer night or whenever. And I spent a year in Canada and the thing I think I miss most about that is ice skating. Of course, we can't be like Canada because ice skating is one of their national sports, but I think that we need an ice skating rink here because people would enjoy learning to skate and even though they can't be professional skaters, some of them might grow up to be, but at least they can learn to skate well. And I don't think that we've got McCormick Pond, but I don't think that's sufficient because it's all bumpy and even though we've got the Zamboni to smooth that out and things, it's just not, it's just not suitable ice to skate on. Thank you.
My name is Bob Lovegrove. I live at 825 Parkview Way. One point before I forget it that this gentleman just made that I think we certainly shouldn't lose sight of, and that is the fact that his age group is an increasing percentage of our population in this state. If you review the demographic statistics that were in the paper, and it will be an increasing one over the 20 years of the proposed bond issue that would, that would pay for this. Is this better? Let me start over. The point that I wanted brought out was that the senior citizens of this state are an increasing percentage of the population and the tax burden that these people will bear is not insignificant and they will be an ever-growing percentage of our population over the 20 years of the bond issue that is proposed to pay for these projects. I'd like to make my remarks to the extent, first of all, that I'd like to commend the efforts of those who have worked on the development of these proposals. I know that they have put in a tremendous amount of time and I think it's been a very valuable community service for them to have done that. And having been a scout leader for a number of years, I know the importance of activities like this to the youth of this community. And I would like to see these ideas brought to fruition. What bothers me is the same thing that bothers the gentleman who spoke before me, and that is how these items are going to be paid for. I'm quite concerned, first of all, about the process by which we are here tonight addressing this issue. Having spent four years developing capital improvement programs like this myself, I can't remember a project of anywhere near this magnitude that immediately rose to the surface for consideration in this process. And I think that has occurred as a result of the personal interest that the mayor has taken in this. And I think it's inconsistent with the system by which this program has been developed. Secondly, we don't have any alternatives to discuss tonight, other than a four and a half million dollar project that includes an ice rink and a ballpark in the downtown area.
I'd be interested, Bob, if you have some alternatives. This is an opportune time for you to...
Well, I was just going to say, I heard about a very clear alternative for the ballpark out at the American Legion Field, from people who started in this group and as a result of continuing meetings were alienated from the process because their ideas were discarded. And I was told that a comparable facility or an adequate facility for a ball team could be developed at the American Legion Field for half a million dollars.
You do understand, Bob, that we couldn't participate?
I understand that. That is not an issue. It's all public money. The MRA money comes out of my pocket, just the same as it comes out of the people who own the property down here. You know that as well as I do. Not the entire public knows that, but I do. Because you could release those funds and reduce our taxes with that money. Secondly, because we have no alternatives, we really only have a pro or con position to take here tonight. I'm pro the idea, I'm con the way it's proposed to be funded. The only good thing about it is the voters are going to have the opportunity to have their say. I'm offended by the fact that the Reserve Street Fire Station and the relocation of Fire Station Number One, which have been in the CIP for years, are taking second seat to this proposal. We made some promises to the areas in this community that were annexed to the city with regard to fire protection. And the number of dollars that are in this CIP to provide those two stations is roughly equivalent to the amount of the bond issue that's proposed to go before the voters for this project. So there's a double whammy. We're going to get one this year and one next year. And then where does a jail come in? And where does the fire equipment to equip the Reserve Street Fire Station come in? That's not in hand. We can do it out of reserve equipment that we've saved back from the new equipment we've acquired, but it's not the same quality. As far as I'm concerned, response time for medical emergencies and fires is of far greater importance than whether or not we have a mighty ball team or an ice skating rink. And I think most voters, when given that choice, would agree. We've heard about the profitability of a ball team and we've heard about the ability of an ice skating rink to pay for itself. That profitability is a very skewed perspective. It's the same way that the parking structure is profitable because it doesn't have to amortize any debt on the structure which generates the revenue which the parking commission operates. The ball team is not going to be able to generate sufficient revenues to pay for the ballpark. Obviously, if it could, some private investor would have come in here and done it. If the ice rink is going to be profitable enough to finance the rink itself, let's go ahead and sell revenue bonds. That way, it doesn't affect the taxpayers and the bondholders are the ones who take that risk. To me, that makes some sense. As an economist, I feel fairly strongly about letting the beneficiaries pay the vast majority of the cost. That's called containing the externality aspect of any activity. And one final point, in the CIP and in the press, we hear about how much it's going to cost the owner of the $50,000 house. There aren't very many of those out there anymore. As a licensed real estate broker, our average house value is up considerably from that. It's closer to $75,000. And so I would suggest that we look a little bit more realistically at what these values are going to be. And when the county assessor gets done reappraising all of the real estate in Missoula County, everyone's going to find their taxes go up because for the first time in many, many years, we are seeing appreciation in real estate values of significant consequence. And these people's tax will go up, just as the former speaker mentioned, even though he had done a little more to his home other than maintain it. And that is starting to happen again and I think we all hope that it will continue to happen so that our homes can become the kind of investments that we all anticipated they would be when we originally bought them. My point is, people's taxes are going to go up without this and I-105 has not been repealed for an explicit reason. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Parliament Mayor Lovegrove's comments, I think, are a good place for me to respond to. He's raised some important issues. My name is Dan Kemos. I'm the mayor of Missoula. Many of the issues that Mr. Lovegrove has raised, I think, circle around a concept of timing, which has been alluded to a number of times here and I'd like to ask you to focus on it. First of all, the question of the priority of putting this issue up for a vote as opposed to the fire stations is something that was very carefully considered by my administration. And quite frankly, the reason for the choice here is about threefold. First of all, that we are in the course of a very careful planning process for fire station locations and that process simply is not ripened yet, but will be by next year. Secondly, are some of the issues of timing that were referred to by Mr. Balderson, that with regard to baseball at least, that there is a very substantial issue of timing here, that if we want to take advantage of an opportunity, that opportunity is here now. The third issue, though, that I'd like you to be aware of, has to do with the 40 percent turnout, which Mr. McDonald inquired about earlier. A 40 percent turnout is difficult to achieve, but not by any means impossible to achieve in a city-only and a council-only election. My own judgment about that is that we will only achieve a 40 percent turnout if you've got items on the ballot that turn people out in addition to the council elections themselves. Fire stations are not that kind of issue. I think we have seen from the turnout here this evening, an indication of the public interest in this issue. And my judgment is that we will get a turnout in addition to the normal turnout, just because of the public interest in this. If we put fire stations on the ballot this year, I think we could be guaranteed that we would not have the 40 percent turnout. We would therefore have a fruitless election and then we would have to do it again next year and then we would have issues piled up. But there is a more important issue of timing even than that that I would like to ask the board to attend to. And that has to do with your justifiable concern about your limited resources. And here, I'd like to refer to the testimony of Mr. Cedarburg because I agree entirely with Dan Cedarburg about what is at stake with this proposal. This agency, as you know, has a new, at least partial, lease on life because of the decision to bond for the parking structure. It is a lease on life that leaves us, I think, on the threshold of some expanded possibilities, which Mr. McDonald has alluded to in terms of the completion of riverfront trails and so on. But the way that I believe that we should look at this project is that it is the hinge that will open the door into a new tax increment district and get the development to the west of the current district underway in a way that nothing else that we could conceive of right now would do. We have a substantial and important area that we know will change in its use. The question is, how will it change and how quickly can we begin the change in a way that really will spark development and spark tax increment in the area to the west of the current district? And I'm convinced that investment of the kind that you're being asked to make tonight will do that. Part of the reason I'm convinced of that and part of the reason I have wanted the MRA to be involved in this is because I believe it's absolutely essential that we do a quality job with that property and with the complex that we're talking about here. And MRA has consistently done a quality job. I today had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting for the new stairway at the Van Buren Street Bridge. It's just one more example of your consistent attention to quality, which is what we need in this case. It's what we need in order to raise, to meet the kinds of concerns that Mr. Jontle raised for us this evening. So I... So I think that we have an opportunity here to invest what I realize is a substantial part of your scarce resources in a way that will not deplete the tax increment fund, but will guarantee the expansion of tax increment in a way that nothing else could do. And it's for that reason above all that I would ask you to give favorable consideration to this. And one final issue of timing is that in order to move forward and allow the council to make a decision about whether to put it to a vote, that we do need to ask that you act as quickly as you can, obviously, with your full considered judgment. The last thing that I want to say is that I spend a fair amount of time going around to schools and talking to kids about how they feel about Missoula. And I have just been overwhelmed by the consistency of their reaction, that they genuinely feel that there is not enough for them to do, that it isn't good for them, the kinds of things that they finally end up doing, and that they really believe that the city should do something more to provide some kind of engaging activities for them. I think that I, in all of my public life, have rarely seen as heartfelt a response, and I believe a spontaneous response, as we've seen this evening from kids. And I think it's only the tip of the iceberg. And I think that it speaks to the deepest reason that we could possibly have for going forward with these projects. Glad to answer any questions.
I wasn't planning to speak this evening, but I would like to speak very briefly. I'm a member of the Missoula Baseball Advocates Group. My name is Jim Ranny. I live at 1429 Jackson Street. I think I am very typical of the members of the committee, and I wanted to speak a little bit to this group, who I've never spoken to individually, about, I think, what's been happening with that group that's been meeting faithfully for quite a long time. I sense a real excitement on that committee. I think most of the people on that committee are like myself. They've had some very good experiences with baseball, mostly as children. Some of my favorite memories of my childhood are my grandfather, a member of the senior generation that was mentioned here a while ago, taking me to the Milwaukee Braves games. Some of my most favorite memories, I could tell one story after another of events that occurred and playing ball. Since that time, I think each of us have certain memories. I think baseball's a special sport. It's a sport where it's the father tossing the ball, playing catch with his son. It's a very family-oriented sport. The whole family can go out to the ballpark. It's not just a sluttet sort of thing. And so I think that, I would say this, that if the, if this group does authorize this money and if this thing does go forward, as I hope and I believe it will, I think if Billings can do it long since, and Great Falls can do it, why can't Missoula do it? I'd like to start taking my son to ball games, and everybody on this committee feels that way. I don't know all the ins and outs about the economics. All I can speak about is what I know. What I know is that there's a committed group, a very large committed group, that's ready to work its high nanof to answer some of those questions, those valid questions that have been raised by people who've spoken earlier and do need to be addressed. And we'll work hard to make this a reality.
My name's Peter Stark, and I live at 809 East Front Street. I've been a member of the ice rink committee pretty much since its beginning. We've been meeting every week. I've been in most of the meetings. And I'm speaking to you not so much as an advocate of the ice rink, but as an advocate of the site itself. And when we became involved with the ballpark effort and started looking at the Champion site, I went down there, and it's, what struck me is that there's this incredible piece of land right in downtown Missoula, that there are any number of things that could be done with it. And ballparks and ice rinks are only one possibility. That I think there's a tremendous possibility there for riverfront park. And this is one of the things we've kicked around in the meetings. There are any number of other uses that come to mind. There's been talk of a nature center. I know there was a group that was trying to get a nature center established somewhere in this community. That would be a wonderful site for something like that, to have a strip along the river of restored river bottom land, the way it was before Lewis and Clark came through here, and to have an educational center. I know of a similar center like that in Wisconsin along a river bottom, which brings in 10,000 elementary schoolchildren a year, and has classrooms, has educational arboretums affiliated with it. So what I'd like to urge the committee is to think not only of sports facilities at that site, but to think of the site as a whole piece of Missoula, as a blank slate for Missoula, and some of the other possibilities that could be established on that site, not only nature centers, or soccer fields, or softball fields, or whatever, but especially with an eye to preserving the river as it is, or to restoring the riverfront, and establishing some sort of park there. And so not only would I, would, do I think the committee should look at the eight acres that the Champion, Champion now owns, or I guess owns outright, but all the other private land there, and if possible, negotiate for that. So whatever happens out of this effort with the ballpark and the ice rink, there's a lot of pros and cons, obviously, that I think it would be a grave, grave mistake to let that site go by, whatever happens to either the ice rink or the ballpark. Thank you.
My name is Greg Rutherford, and I live on 2801 Sunrise Promenade. It's been a long night, and I want to just thank all the people, especially Mayor Chemus and the group of people in the administration for bringing this before the public. As an issue to see, there is community support for particularly an ice skating rink, but I think in general, the vision demonstrated by him and his administration is commendable. And I'm sorry that ex-Mayor Lovegrove has a somewhat more narrow view of things, even though I hesitate to admit I voted for him last time, but next time I wouldn't. But anyways, I think he has some good points. However, I think the community of Missoula needs to have an expansive vision of its ability to make community. And I think anybody that's been at baseball, or ice hockey, or at a rink, realizes that that's one of the best places to get to know your neighbors, and certainly enhances community. And so that's the main thing I want to do, is just thank the people who have helped bring this issue before the public. And hopefully, within two years, that the group of people that I've been working with and so forth won't have to spend 100 or 200 hours to skate 10 hours in the winter. But anyways, thanks a lot.
If we could hurry along, I would like to.
Sorry. I'm Lisa Swanson. I live at 1114 Vine. I was asked by the hockey players to come and speak. And I first of all want to say I'm a big baseball fan. I'm from Minneapolis. I love the Twins, but I wear a Yankees jacket. Going to big games in the cities is a lot different than going to the Brewers games in Helena. And I really just want to emphasize that I was a single parent for years, and it was one place where I could go with my kids. I could afford it. And whereas I know that today, I don't think I could afford to take my kids to a professional baseball game. And I think that small town like Helena or Missoula, you have a totally different situation. And, excuse me, I just feel that, I agree with the mayor that it is a real good place for a community to come together. People of all incomes, all walks of life, can go to a ballgame, sit down with their kids, and they don't have to get a babysitter, and they can bring grandma, they can bring everybody. I agree with Ann, with the traffic. It's a real dilemma. You have to balance it out. You know, Missoula has a lot of pollution, and so I guess that's a consideration. Final point on the figure skating, I want to say figure skating. I've heard a lot about hockey. And I just want to put in a pitch that there's a real need out there for some professional figure skating. I was a figure skater for nine years. I belong to the Braemar City of Lakes Figure Skating Club. And that was a very long time ago, but I still do skate. I'm very old and rusty. But I do get a lot of kids that are very taken by it. And they come up to me, and they surround me, and they ask me to do another spin, or do another awful jump. And I just feel like, wow, you know, this is, I'm so bad today, but these little kids just love it. And I work with them winter after winter, like in Bozeman, I lived there 14 years. And I taught them, and I did some private lessons and some classes. And they don't have a chance to get good. The ice just isn't long enough. These kids don't have a chance. And if you want kids to be good at skating, you have to have an indoor rink, because they're not going to make it without it. And it's really a shame to let that waste of talent go. And if they want to do it, they have the talent. I think they should have the opportunity. And I don't think it should come down to the senior citizen taxpayer argument versus what can we do for our kids? I think they're not mutually exclusive. Thank you.
My name is Linda Smith. I live at 545 Woodford. Knowing that some form of development will inevitably take place on the Champion lands, I've come tonight to express my support for preserving and protecting the character of the riverfront corridor on the south side of the river, both visually as an open space opportunity to view the river in some length and breadth, and to see it function as a viable wildlife corridor that will provide adequate space and habitat primarily for migrating birds. To do this, we must have an adequate easement. At a minimum, I went down there and walked around a bit to try to get a feel for it. And it seems to me at a minimum, we need to have like 50 feet as the easement. And then past that, we need some kind of a buffer so that there wouldn't be a structure built right up against that 50 feet. We need some kind of perhaps vegetative buffer there so that people who are walking along the river don't have to engage with this intense recreational facility if they don't want to. You know, they can have a different experience. And again, I don't know the exact numbers of all this, but I think the feel of it is what matters. I encourage the city to design the baseball stadium and ice skating rink, if that is what goes in there, to share a structure, like Doug Willie talked about, you know, building them together to save money and to save space. And to explore the possibility of locating it on the southernmost part of the Champion land, away from the river, or maybe built into the berm over there. I also encourage the city to promote bicycles and walking and public transportation, the use of buses as ways to get to the area, and not to provide a sea of asphalt. Because once you provide it, it will be used like that. So if there are ways to encourage the use differently, that would be great.
That's fine. My name is Mike Thomas. I live at 1536 East Dickinson, and I'll be brief and to the point. Echoing what Mr. Cedarburg said with regards to the ice facility as well as the baseball field, I'd like to address the ice skating side of it. Echoing what Mr. Cedarburg said as far as an event idea, bringing revenue to the downtown area. The hockey side of it hasn't been addressed. You could have leagues, children coming from Canada, state of Washington, Idaho, et cetera. Obviously, those people are driven in here. They have to be housed. They have to have food, et cetera. So there's going to be a lot of revenue that will be generated that way. With regards to figure skating, which is previous to me addressed, which hadn't been up until now. South of here in Sun Valley, world-class figure skaters come during the summer. Two years ago at the Winter Olympics, people from Missoula drove all the way to Calgary to see these people. I'm not so certain that on some certain occasions, we might not be able to get people of those noted performances in here as well. With regards to the speed skating side of it, one need only look to be at the results of Martin White and his group at the High Altitude Training Center. Last year and the year before, they hosted the Women's World Cup events. As a child growing up in Buda, I witnessed the development of two Olympic skaters. With regards to my role as a parent, and children in general, questions of participation, it appeals to all levels, the idea of learning to skate, a male or female side of it with regards to hockey, figure skating, speed skating, et cetera. As for the traffic side of it, one thing that's been failed to be addressed, the school district during the winter has a program that children are bused from different locales all the way out to the Marshall Ski Area. And I would propose that something along this nature could be done as well for children that are either in leagues, figure skating, or in developmental stages as well. Thank you.
I'm Chris Volk. I live at 104 Daly. I moved back here in October from the Sun Valley Idaho area, where they have a very active ice skating program with two rinks, one of which is an outdoor rink, the second is an indoor rink. I moved back here because I'm interested in community. I'm very interested in the concept of community, and I'm interested in Missoula as a specific community. To address a couple of the points that I've heard this evening, one of which is brought by Will Snodgrass for Clean Air, we discussed that at length and determined that the average home has between five and seven trips a day, in vehicle trips a day, in and out of the home. We feel that if high-density housing were to ever be developed in this area, that the vehicular traffic would be far more significant than the traffic that would be coming in and out of the recreational facilities there. With respect to the older gentleman who talked about the economic climate in Missoula, I do feel that it could be conceived as depressing now that Tim registry is failing somewhat. We do need to attract new business to the area. Quality of life is the most important issue to new businesses, considering moves. Fortune Magazine has done a survey for a number of years in a row, and it is the single most important element in their decisions as to where to move and when to move. Patagonia is one of the most forward-thinking companies in the nation right now. They've selected Missoula for their shipping operations. That's very significant, I think. In terms of money, money going out of state, money going out of the area, the concept of import substitution is such that we can keep our dollars here with a facility such as this. We can keep people who would be going to downhill ski areas out of the area here for hockey tournaments, for ice skating shows, for various things like that. When I learned about the MRA, I was very excited to know that the, to figure out how it is funded, how you derive your money. It's a wellspring of money that comes from the generation of business within the community that comes from rising property values. I feel very strongly that these two products would contribute to that. And as a wellspring, I'd like to view this as something that should be dipped into and something that should be seeded, used to seed the new projects. And I think that these two projects are the kinds of projects that would definitely contribute to your coffers. I have received your 11 evaluation criteria for which I have established responses. There's probably too much to read through these now, so I will give you each a copy of what I've written. But I feel that the project is in complete agreement with every one of these concepts, every one of these criteria, with the exception of payment of taxes. And it's not really applicable to tax payment because we're hoping that these facilities will be tax exempt. One other note, I guess, when I came back here and learned of this group, I became involved with the Winter Sports Council and also the Missoula Ice Recreation Corporation, which is a not-for-profit incorporated entity that has maintained the ice at Blithmore Park for a number of years. And we organized an event, a public event, to, pretty much just for families and kids to stimulate interest in skating. And that day was a particularly warm day. The ice that had been very hard in the morning began to turn to slush. Lisa Swanson, who, the figure skater who spoke earlier, agreed to give a demonstration and came out to perform in front of two TV cameras and in front of all of these people who had gathered to watch, and found that she was unable to do anything because the ice, her skates were just sinking into the ice, which pretty much illustrated our point that we do really need an indoor rink in Missoula. But if you could have been there to see the kids, if you could have been there to see the families, and what this was doing for people, just this idea that people are scratching little pieces of ground all around Missoula trying to find ice is an indicator of how important this could be to the community. It really rounds out the winter recreational gamut of activities. And we have downhill skiing, we have cross-country skiing, we have snowmobiling. These are things that all take people away from the valley. These are all things that require much more vehicular traffic and pollution than something such as strolling down to the ice rink with your skates over your shoulder, which would be within walking distance of the university, by the way. 10,000 people will use the facility. Plus, the baseball park adds a dimension of summer spectator recreation that the Washington Grizzly Stadium now adds for the football community and for the fall and winter months. So it's just such a, it's a natural. It just fits. It really feels good. And I hope you all give it your utmost consideration. Also, I'd like, I realize this public meeting has been kind of hard for everybody to exchange information with impassioned views and information with impassioned views in the short time that we have, and we're all a little nervous to be up here speaking to this device. So if we could maybe sit down at a one-to-one meeting with our group soon, it would be really helpful, I think, for us all to answer questions and come to some common terms. Thanks.
My name is Lynn Price. I live at six eighteen South Second. I'm a member of the McCormick Neighborhood Association. And because we're in the neighborhood most adjacent to the Champion land, if it would end up to be there, we have some concerns. First of all, there's a variety of opinions, just as what was expressed tonight. There's no consensus as far as being pro or con. There's a lot of interest. The main concerns of our neighborhood association are the traffic. Right now, the two streets that, I'm not sure what streets you're thinking of would go in the Champion, but the two streets that lead there are residential streets and don't have any sidewalks, a lot of foot traffic. So that's a concern. And then, of course, wondering about what noise would be like in the baseball games. And we meet regularly every month, and we'd like to get more information as this develops, so that we can be part of the process. Thank you.
Chairman Stalkup, members of the MRA Board. My name is Chuck Sterns. I'm the Finance Director and City Clerk for the City of Missoula. I'm here mostly as a resource in case I can answer any questions on non-amortization, tax impact, voter turnout, those sorts of questions. I do have information that I could help provide. I think it's important to answer a couple of questions as far as whether you folks at the City Council would be giving away money. It's real important that you're being asked to earmark or allocate some money, not spend it necessarily. Yes, it would, could ultimately be spent. The City Council's bond election, if it occurs, is not a mandate to spend the money, it's authority to spend the money. If after your authority is granted, after the residents of Missoula grant their authority, there are problems determined, either the franchise won't come to town, or there are environmental problems at the site, those sorts of problems, there does not mean, there does not need to be a bond issue and a tax impact. So, you know, it's been a year in the planning, and the planning will continue, and the work needs to continue. I think on that site, based on a lot of comments here, MRA is going to be involved in that site, most likely one way or another. So if you allocate your money and there's just no, their bond election fails, or there is no baseball ballpark, then you do have some money invested for that. I mean, your money is an investment in both your future and the community's future and the downtown's future. That is uncommitted land, that is in the downtown, and something's going to happen there. When we talked with Champion about all the land down there, their response was basically two words, and that was market value. And so if we don't, if the public doesn't exercise the option for that land down there, it will go for market value, it will go for housing, or some type of development. And the final point that I will make is that in our studies, the reason public financing is being asked for is that ninety-six percent of the minor league ballparks are publicly financed. There have been studies done by Johns Hopkins University on this, and we've looked at a lot of surveys, whether it's hotel motel tax in Florida, sales tax in Colorado, or property tax in Montana. It typically is almost always financed by the public because the franchise, the ice rink, they cannot pay for the debt service, and they just do not. And so that's the reason it becomes a public investment, and then the franchise can use that public investment for certain times of the year to make some income and derive some economic benefit. Thank you.
Any others?